Call the Board of Ed meeting to order at 7:00 PM. The first item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States and the nation, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Nice to see some people in the room with us today, and I think there are a few people online also. We have one board member who cannot make it to the meeting tonight, Deaneesi, and Brendan and Ilda said they were going to probably be joining us online because of family issues, so hopefully they'll appear. But first order of business is approval of minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the April 19th, I mean, April 9th Board of Ed meeting minutes.
So moved.
Motion made by Paula, seconded by Mark. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Then we're up to public comment. I see that Kami has signed up to speak under public comments, so come on up to the mic and make sure you identify yourself for the record. And if there's anybody online who wants to speak during public comment, you need to indicate so by raising her hand or speaking up. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. My name is Kami Nyland-Porier, Wyndham resident, parent of former Wyndham students, Wyndham teacher, and president of the Wyndham Federation of Teachers. Tonight I'll wear the union hat to express just a tiny bit of my frustration over the last few weeks. You see, in my role, I try very hard to be a good communicator. When the Board of Education takes action that might impact the WFT, I share the information with our members, sometimes via email, sometimes at meetings. As an example, when the Board voted on March 12th to pursue a move to the state partnership insurance plan, I watched the YouTube video when it was posted, took screenshots of the important slides that were shared that night, and sent them to fellow union leaders to share the good news with their buildings. People were excited that after many years of discussing a move to the state plan, we would finally be invited to enroll in a plan that, according to one of the slides, would offer an opportunity for better insurance for our employees. This decision by the Board of Ed should come as no surprise to anyone in town government. For the last six years, there has been re-opener language in the WFT contract stating, "Either party may initiate a re-opener to explore the possibility of the state partnership medical plan." That's on page 33, part of Appendix Schedule A on Insurance. I would think that the Town Council and Board of Finance would be especially interested in the insurance section of a bargaining agreement. On April 2nd, our Benefits Department sent out an announcement, exciting news for WPS employees, that there would be a live info session for new medical insurance coming to Wyndham Public Schools. I copied the link to the informational PDF that was included in the email and sent it out again to our members in case they missed it. The Benefits Department sent friendly reminders so their busy employees would remember the important date. On April 8th, Wyndham employees attended the live virtual informational session and found out that this could begin as early as July 1st. There was an opportunity for questions and answers, and the recorded version of the session was placed on the Wyndham Public School website for those employees who couldn't attend the live session. On April 11th, we notified our membership of a presentation and vote, which would be held on April 22nd, to accept the proposed changes to our insurance carrier. The leadership from four unions agreed to a joint meeting with council that was supposed to happen yesterday, April 22nd. But on April 21st, we were notified that the meeting was canceled as the Board of Ed continues to deliberate with the town before the Board of Finance's public hearing. We had to give our members just one day's notice that there would be no meeting, no insurance presentation, no vote, yet. Can you imagine the questions that union leaders have had to answer with this delay? So yes, I am frustrated. We are still waiting for the clarity that will come from tonight's meeting. I understand the complexities of this transition, but I am hopeful that the Board of Education will go forward with the recommendation to move our employees to the state partnership plan for this July 1st. Your employees deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kami. Appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment? Okay, I don't see anybody online. Okay, so we're going to move on. Board Chair's report. All I'm going to say right now under the Board Chair's report is that we do have a very important discussion tonight for the Board of Ed to figure out how it wants to move forward vis-à-vis the health insurance plan, and we need to have a full discussion about all the dynamics that are playing themselves out in this current budget season. So without any further ado, I would entertain a motion to move Item 8, Budget Discussion, up on the agenda to, before the Acting Superintendent's report, so that we can begin this conversation early on in today's meeting. Would anybody like to make that motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Katina, seconded by Mark. Any discussion on the motion to move this up on the agenda? Hi, Ilda, welcome. I will entertain, I mean, I'll take a vote on moving it up. All those in favor of moving this item up on the agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, it's unanimous. Ilda voted yes. So, the discussion. It is the Board of Ed's responsibility, as we stated last week when several of us were at the Board of Finance meeting. It's our responsibility to present to the Board of Finance and to the voters ultimately. What we feel is the budget that we need to meet the legal requirements of educating the students in our district and meeting the needs of the community educationally. Thus, we submitted a budget to the Board of Finance in March, which asked for a 5.8% increase. That budget included the decision that the Board made in March to move to the state employee health plan and out of the self-insured plan that we are in with the town employees. Kami was correct in her remarks earlier that we've been discussing this for years. I would actually go back further and say that some of us have been wanting to do this since 2013, even as far back as 2012, when we first made the decision to go into this, into this self-insured plan with the town. But like it or not, the town charter is set up in such a way that the Board of Finance has the authority to take whatever budget request we put forward and alter the bottom line. They can't alter agenda, I mean, line items, but they can alter the bottom line and send a different amount to the voters for referendum approval in the budget referendum. And ultimately, the voters decide what we get. There have been years when the Board of Finance has decided to present the budget as proposed by the Board of Ed to the voters and see if they will support that. That's been rare, but that has happened, and I will say in my experience, there have been several times when the voters turned that down, and then the Board of Finance can go back with a different amount and present it to the voters. I wish that we didn't have to do it this way. Having been on the Town Council and on the Board of Finance and on the Board of Ed, I think the Board of Ed is perfectly capable of making decisions about our budget on our own, but we are dealt this card in the current charter, which we cannot alter at this point in time without there being a Charter Revision Commission, and we have to make a decision tonight about how we want to proceed with the budget. We are faced with a Board of Finance public hearing on our budget next Tuesday, the 29th, at 7:00 PM at Town Hall. We can show up, and members of the public can show up and opine and offer their opinions about what they think the Board of Finance should be considering in the budget for the Board of Ed. The Board of Finance has to balance, not the Board of Ed budget, but also the town budget, because they both get presented to the voters. I will just say that the past two conversations with the Board of Finance have indicated to me that we are not going to get our 5.8% request, but we'll probably get something else, and the question is, how do we want to move forward knowing that we may be faced with a cut to our budget request of 5.8%? We were offered by the town a proposal last week to consider delaying our decision to join the state employee plan by one year in exchange for some, Mary, let me just finish. I'm just giving an overview for everybody, okay? I know you don't agree with this, and you're frustrated, and you'll get a chance to speak as soon as I'm done. I just want everybody to know, because members of the public may not know this, that the town has asked us to delay going into the state employee plan for one year so that they can buy the time with their bargaining units to move along with us. If we move along without them, the broker, insurance broker, Lockton Associates, which the town and the Board of Ed have been using for the past number of years, has indicated that because of the population mix of the town employee pool and their pool being much smaller amount of people than we have in the Board of Ed employee pool, that it could significantly increase costs to the town of between $300,000 and $1 million, you know, with all things considered. So we could decide to take the offer that's on the table and negotiate details around that offer and say that we're going to delay a year and give the town time to move the town employees with our employees at the end of next year. That would have to be, in the minds of many people on the Board of Ed, a signed agreement that was legally reviewed. We have been advised by the state employee plan, Rita checked this yesterday, that we have to finalize our contract with them by May 1st to go over to the state plan. We can't, if we don't sign a contract by May 1st, we can't do the switch on July 1st. And so there are several different scenarios that we need to consider as a board tonight about how we might like to go forward on this. I know that the Board of Finance is watching us to see what we come up with, and so that when they meet next week, they'll have that information from us based on tonight. Jay Hanfield from the Board of Finance is sitting here in the audience, watching firsthand tonight, and I do want everybody to know that I've asked the town manager to join us here tonight, Rob Zarnetsky, so that he's available during our discussion if board members have any questions, or if Rob would like to, like, make any statement to us when we open up the discussion. That's all I'm going to say right now. I would just finally say that I think we need to be considering our students first, and what is best for our students, and how we can get the most money possible approved in our school budget to meet the needs of the students in our district and the staff in our district. And Mary, I know you're itching to say something, so I'm going to hand it over to you first.
Well, I did raise my hand. So I have to say, first of all, I did have prepared comments. I have a lot of background on this whole history of the Health Reserve Fund, which is not revenue. It cannot be used, right? The town is revenue, but they have been doing that, and that is something I'm going to be investigating further. And I also can't find their policy that they were supposed to pass years ago about how to handle the Health Reserve Fund. But I have to say, first of all, I am shocked, Lynn, to hear you characterize the situation in the way you have, because we did, after many years and many discussions, some of which did include the Board of Finance, the fact that they haven't been around for the last nine months or 10 months is not our fault. They know that this has been one of the things, and we have put it off for other types of budgetary reasons. This year, it would work. It is a less costly plan. It is absolutely the best thing for our students and our staff, as we very thoughtfully discussed and researched over many years. Some of the meetings that were had with Board of Finance members, the town manager, and staff are also, have been outside of the public purview, and that is against the law, and I will be happy to discuss the fact that that has to stop. However, the idea that we made a decision with our budget, and now it is a completely different thing, that we said we're going to this plan as we have hoped and tried over six years, and we decided this was the year, and by the way, yesterday's meeting was not supposed to be canceled. We made a decision at a special Board of Ed meeting that all of the things that needed to be done about this program, all the steps taken, were going to follow because we had already started the process when we made the vote. So I don't know how that happened, and I'm very disappointed, and I would like answers to that question as well. But the idea that whatever the Board of Finance does with our budget, of course, is not, they do have limits. It is a different question, and I will not be threatened and blackmailed. It is, the fact that we are going to the state plan is separate from the fact that they might want to punish us, which is an outrageous thing, and they have actually been very public about that idea, that they want our reserve money, $3.7 million of which they have gotten over the years, and we don't, they're apparently using it for revenue, not to lower premium costs, not to prepay health costs, which is what you are supposed to do with a health reserve, by the way. So I am very disappointed. If the other things are going to be cut, we can look at other things. We can have the state see the type of problem we're in, and we can say, they can cover magnet school tuition. We're taking that out of our budget outside district magnet school tuition. There are other things. This is something we have studied and investigated over the years, and I am not going to put them in the same category. That is something the Board of Finance has forced us to do. They can look for the money, and they have an undesignated fund balance, which is padded with the reserve fund that they've taken from us over the years. They will have to use that this year to cover their health costs while they seriously look about going on to the self-state plan, because I am really dubious about whether they will do that.
Thank you, Mary. I just want to respond to a question that you had in your statement, was about the decision to postpone the meetings that were scheduled yesterday with the bargaining units to, and our attorney, to sign off on the opener in the contracts. Our attorney called me on Monday afternoon or late morning and said that she advised us legally not to have those, that particular set of meetings until after the Board made its decision tonight, and that those meetings would be rescheduled until the, to the 29th. In the meantime, all of the information sessions on the state employee plan that are happening in the different schools around the district started today and are happening on schedule. So we haven't stopped everything. And I will just publicly say, to Mary's point about money that's been created by the health plan and put into the undesignated fund balance, Board of Ed funds, generated by money that we've paid on premiums and also the percentage of payments toward health care that have been made by employees, and that against the money that has been required to fund the health, that's been, health care that's been used by the employees, has created $3.5 million in surplus over the past four years, which has been taken and put into the undesignated fund balance. And that goes to the point that I know Jay Hanfield raised at the Board of Finance meeting, and many of us have raised, is that if the town is being allowed in its budget to use $750,000 of that money to help improve their bottom line as it goes forward to the voters, the same dollar amount should be afforded to the Board of Ed. And that's one of the suppositions we've put into some of the scenarios that were presented to board members, is that we would ask for that regardless of what happens, that if it's, it's only fair that we've generated a lot of the money that has been used to go into that reserve, undesignated fund balance. So I just wanted to respond to those two things, Mary. Thank you. Katina?
I'm going to tell you exactly how I'm going to vote. I'm going to vote for us to move to the state employee healthcare, and I am going to vote for keeping our percent increase that we requested. Why? And this is why, sir. We are not the enemy. Our children are our future. Money is policy. We want to increase the level of education and well-being in our community to prevent more problems. Our children have been minimized and undermined through years by the town of Wyndham, and the comments I hear are because our children are children of color, or are Spanish-speaking, learning English. That's not acceptable. That is not acceptable, and I'll say it for the third time, that is not acceptable. They are our citizens and our children, our community members. They are the students who graduate from Wyndham High School and work now in Washington, our medical doctors, nurses, construction people, good human beings raising other children. It's, it's not even reasonable that we don't fund our schools in the manner that our children and families deserve. This should be priority one, period. I understand, and I am a taxpayer, have been always a taxpayer, that we have to do the finances fair for all, and that we have senior citizens, and that we cannot increase so much property value. On the other hand, the children are not in need to suffer, and we are the ones feeding them in the morning and at midday and educating their brains for them to produce and become members of our town and professionals and workers. It's unconscionable. We are not, I am not going to agree that we should not ask for what we deserve and what we, our children and staff needs. I will not apologize. We have studied and gone through what the health system should be for our employees for a long time. I am sorry that some of the staff and people are new, but you can encourage your staff to join us right now. There has to be a way that we all join in. So therefore, that's what I'm saying. It is my moral compass and conscience that our staff deserves to move finally to the state healthcare, which I'm a beneficiary now, was not when I was an employee here for 26 years, and thanks to my husband, and that our children need what they need and deserve to become full human beings that are contributing to our economy and our well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, Katina. Is there, is there anybody, Neil, go ahead.
Just want to make two points. One of them, just, and I know you responded to Dr. Galucci, but I want to share, in terms of implementing Board Directive, the current vote is that we move to the state partnership plan, that's what's in effect. So the reason we did pause to reiterate was legal advice, but by May 1st, if the decision is to remain moving forward with the state partnership plan, we feel comfortable, we will do our best to make sure that takes place. I just want to ensure everybody, and that is also why we did not cancel any of the question and answer sessions, as that still fulfills meeting the Board Directive. So I just wanted everyone to know that. And then something that came up today, and I shared with the Board Chair before this meeting, was that in meeting with our bargaining unit, the Wyndham Federation of Teachers, one of the questions they asked in the conversations with the Board of Finance that they had observed, was that the discussions were around the impact to the Board budget, the Board of Education portion of the contribution to the health insurance, but then they asked, well, what about our members? What would the impact be? So when we did a, and this is just one bargaining unit, we took our teachers' union, this obviously is very complex, and we did this, thanks to Rita being the quick worker that she is, ran some numbers. What we saw was the annual portion per employee is comparable if you stay in the state plan versus the Lockton plan, however, that doesn't include the $1,000 to $2,000 that goes into the health deduction, the H- that goes into the health deduction, the HSA portion. So it actually is cheaper per employee. And again, there's different plans and stuff, but like about 1K to 2K. So I did want to just publicly say that, because that's something our bargaining unit did bring forward.
Anybody else on the board want to speak? Mark?
Yep. Someone told me earlier that this was going to be one of the toughest decisions that I've made on the Board of Ed, and that's been many, many years, and many, many tough decisions. And this is right up there with it as one of the tougher decisions. I feel kind of boxed in. On one hand, I certainly believe that we owe it to our staff to continue forward on a program that we've been working on for two to three years, that we know will benefit them. I certainly agree that we need to find a way to maximize the tax-supported income for our students so we maintain the upward momentum that we've been working with with the students. And I also have concerns with the taxpayers. I mean, I was one of the taxpayers who looked at a $2,000 increase last year. I don't think that was the Board of Ed's fault. I think that was a miscalculation. But that's, that's history. So I do have a concern for all three. It puts, really puts me into a bind. But I also feel that as a board, along with the Board of Finance, we haven't approached this. We've asked to, but we have not approached this in a way that it's been negotiated or been discussed. There's been things said about what happens if we move. There are things, but there's been no, and we talked about taxes being high, but there's been no discussion about, well, if it's a rainy day fund, it's pretty much rainy right now. So maybe we should work together as two boards, or the three boards of Town Council, and find a way around the solution rather than just come up with or else situations. So it makes a very difficult decision for me. But I think we need, and we have room for more detailed discussion with the Board of Finance. I think there's not enough give and take in terms of what we can do with the budget. I also, looking over the numbers again, as you mentioned earlier, the town did present us with a proposal that if we stayed, there would be some potential compensation to the board to pay for the additional expense of the self-insured health plan, which turns out to be almost the exact same amount that the town says they will incur if we leave. So it seems to me that a simple flip, don't give the money to me, take the money yourself, solves both problems. So I think there, I definitely think there are solutions to this problem. So I'm still not sure where I'm going to vote, but I'm very confused.
Thank you, Mark. This discussion will continue. I also feel that we should hear from the town manager too before we make our decision. But Paula, go ahead.
I don't think I've ever been as frustrated at a meeting, especially a Board of Finance meeting, as I was last week. I just couldn't believe what I was hearing. It's a shame that there was so much shortsightedness from the previous manager, town manager. I think it's sad that there's such a lack of interest in Board of Ed activities that for 10 years, they did not know that this was something that we have been discussing and looking at. Every year since I've been on the board, we have looked at the state plan, what it would cost us to go to the state plan, which other than, or what it would cost us to stay on the self-insured. I mean, I just can't believe that there has been that little interest in what we do as a Board of Ed, that nobody seemed to know that this was a decision that we were arriving at. I guess my other question, given all the emails, and I thank you, Neil and Lynn, for providing us with the information. What are the guarantees we have here? The $800,000 that will cover the cost that, wow, Mark, that really clarifies that issue. The possibility of the money in November, if in fact there is money there to be had, or one half of whatever is there? That doesn't help us with a budget. And even if we were to make this change in our vote, which I'm not so sure I'm in favor of, if we have surpluses, like we have had every year, which have gone to the town, is there not some way that those surpluses could go back to those of our staff who are insured as a credit? You know, maybe they need to get some benefit from this, which would help cover their increased cost, which they wouldn't have had if we go to the state plan. So I think there are a whole lot of questions and no guarantees. And that makes me a little unsure about changing my vote.
Alicia, I don't want to put you on the spot, or Ilda. Do either one of you want to say anything right now?
I do, but if Alicia wants to, she can go first.
Go ahead, Ilda.
Okay. So good evening, everyone. I think it's ridiculous that the Board of Finance is using this insurance, the insurance issue over our heads. To think it's going to affect our schools, students, and their family, this is very, very sad. And we, like Paul just said, we return any unused funds. Shouldn't that come for something? And I think this is really, like everyone else has said, this is very sad, and it's going to be hard to make any kind of vote. I don't know what else to say. I'm very disgusted.
Okay. Thank you, Ilda.
Thank you.
Just before we, before we bring it to a vote, I want to make sure we do hear, just because not everybody was at last week's Board of Finance meeting and/or heard from the town manager. And I just think we owe it to the town to just hear what they have to say before we take a vote on anything. But Katina, you wanted to speak?
Yes. I, I don't know if this should be a motion when we come to the vote, but I, I think we need to separate the issues. Okay.
Let's just wait, and, you know, because we will take a motion after we finish discussion, I think, and have some more discussion if we want. Rob, is there anything you want to say from the town's perspective? There's a mic right there. You can just press the button so it turns green. Okay.
Could you send me a copy of whatever, or save me a copy of whatever he's passing out, please?
Yeah, we'll save you a copy and send it to you electronically. What? Well, okay. Well, let's let him, let's let Rob speak, and then we can ask questions or make comments, okay?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you. I think that, well, first of all, I've been here for three months, so I can't speak to any of the history that's been described here or in the prior meetings that I've been at. But it does seem to me that better communication, more frequent communication, even disagreement. Mark Twain had an old line he used to say, familiarity breeds contempt in children. And I think that we need to communicate with one another in order to make sure that we don't have these sorts of problems going forward. So I deeply appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to talk through things from our perspective. I also deeply appreciate this idea that you're not the enemy. My job is not to advocate for more money for firefighters and policemen, or to advocate for less money for teachers. That's just not, this isn't an enemy situation at all. My job is to try to figure out how to design a budget for the town, not for the school board, but for the town, that achieves as many of the good things that the people in the town want us to achieve. Your job is to do the same for the schools. I respect that. I haven't come to this proposal or made a recommendation or a proposal to the school board in order to cause any injury to your program or to give some advantage to my program, to the extent that it's my program at all. I've done it because we have a math problem. The 5.8% budget is a big increase. That's a problem. That may be the Finance Board's problem. It may not be your problem, but it is a problem. The context that we've got right now is that last year, this community saw one of the largest tax increases ever. Many residents saw 1/3% pro, 1/3 increase, increases in their property taxes. That's a big, big increase. The town has put forward a budget with $750,000 of undesignated fund that helped make that possible, that has no increase at all, and in fact, would make a slight reduction in the taxes paid by residents. The Willimantic taxing district has done the same. That's context. That's not a target for you necessarily, but it's context. The community is in a place where they're not likely to say yay, rah, rah to another big increase. The proposal that we put forward would provide a funding mechanism for 1.15, and it is guaranteed. The $800,000 out of the funds from last year is there and is guaranteed. And the commitment that we're willing to make in writing, however you want to notarize, have the lawyers write it up, is for $350,000 in November or more, if there's more available in that fund. Half, if half is greater, half of the fund, if that number is greater than $350,000. The reason that this looks like it's a helpful thing to me is that $1.15 million is a big chunk off of what you've got to, you've got to do in order to be closer to what I believe is the community expectation. The community is expecting us to be as close to no increase in taxes this year as possible. I've heard it from many taxpayers. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong. I mean, I don't have a crystal ball. I don't have some magic insight. But I've been told this by numerous taxpayers. And if that's the objective, and if that objective can be balanced with a program, funding program for the schools that keeps you from having to call, having to make cuts in programs to kids, I'm happy to make the proposal. I'm happy to offer a path. Now, I know that the schools have been looking at reductions in expenditures. I think I've heard that the reduction in expenditure exercise has yielded about a 1.5% possible reduction. And if you're looking at the 2% that we've suggested we found, and a 1.5, you're already pretty darned close to getting the public to the expectation point that they've set for us, all of us. That's kind of cool. Now, there's lots of history about why we're where we are in the health plan. I want to just clarify one thing, because it bothered me a lot. You know, the accusation has been made that the town has been taking our premiums and using them for their own purpose. The premiums aren't set by the town. The schools set their own premium. Our premium, the premium that we're charging to our employees, the amount of the total premium charged to you and us, we take 10% from our employees. The schools have been taking 22%. So if there was a way to shift that in the past, it would have been to just take less from the town, or the school employees. Those funds have come into the budget, and they have been available for the town to use. The primary use to which we have put those is undesignated fund balance, which helps us lower the bond rate that we pay, the debt rate that we pay, the interest rate that we pay when we borrow money, and debt service, paying for debt that we've already incurred. It hasn't gone to wild lavish parties for anybody in Town Hall. It hasn't been put to a use that was meant to be in any way detrimental to the school program. And while I can't speak to the past, I can say that there's no reason in the world, in the past or in the future, we shouldn't be talking about undesignated fund balance together. This isn't a situation where you are my enemy and I am yours. We have the same objective, to improve the quality of life for people who live in the town of Wyndham. That's our shared goal. And I'm not here to come up with a scheme that's going to cause any harm to the residents, the students in the town of Wyndham. I think that this idea, this idea that you take the $1.15 million that's available and put it to your budget to reduce that 5.8 to a number closer to 3.8 at that point, plus the savings that you can find in the operational program, you're getting down to a 3, and maybe a little better than that, percent increase in the budget. That's more likely to pass at a referendum, I would suggest, based on what I've heard, than a 5.8 is. And that's it. That's, that's the math. That's the, the objective. This is not because I want to do anything against the schools. I'm not your enemy, really.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Mary?
I have some observations. The first is, this is our meeting. We are our own autonomous board. We're elected to be here, and we are elected to set the board budget. We are not here to take advice or to be told what we are going to do. I have, would have to study some of this information about the premiums. However, there is a good chance that we are subsidizing the other town employees, our employees, for their lower premiums, and I don't know for sure. But I'm not here to talk about the town employees' insurance at this point. That is why it is good that it will be separate. I just want to observe that the revaluation, which did result in thousands of dollars of increase for many of us, which nobody in the town tried to phase it in or anything like that. However, it was a really wonderful gift to the town, because they didn't have to have a vote on it, and they didn't say they raised taxes. They just got them, because they said, everybody's valuation changed, and here's your bill. So, but that is not how the Board of Ed budget works. And our, what the increase we are asking for, which could be offset, by the way, with town, you know, the rest of the town budgets. You can do other things to save money in order to help the Board of Ed budget. But that's, that's a different conversation. But now I'm losing my train of thought here. You know, you cannot dictate to us how we spend the money and what we should be doing. And you can't come in here and offer us this fund here and promise that. We need to have control in our own budget. We legally have the ability to control our own budget. And I really think that we shouldn't take any vote at all. We already took a vote. We already made a decision. We are going into the state insurance plan. So we no longer have to have this tussle with the town, and you cannot use health reserves as revenue.
Thank you, Mary. Do you want to say something, Rob?
Yeah, I just want to be clear. We're not trying to dictate anything. All I, I don't know how I'm trying to dictate anything, honestly. You do have the autonomy. And I'm simply stating that if you don't figure out how to bring your budget down from 5.8 to something below that, the chances of it being passed the way it is are low. That having been said, we think we can help. If you don't want the help, that's fine. I mean, that's, that's fine.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Anybody, well, before, is there anybody else who has any questions for Rob or comments based on what he just shared with us? Yes? Katina?
Neil and the staff have been very judicious and detailed in trying to find savings for, for us so that we don't have to request 5.8. I totally think that that is a separate, absolutely separate issue, like big stone wall separate regarding the insurance. If we took a vote for the state insurance to be the part of our staff, if the town wants to do that in the next seven days, that you're welcome to. And if for some reason we need to, we can look at other savings, that's a separate. And if for some reason we need to, we can look at other savings, that's a separate issue in my book. I might be wrong, but I'll stay wrong. We deserve and we have talked about the health insurance to go forward.
I would just, Rob, I think you can sit down unless you get after-
If I may, I just want to make one last comment, and that is this. It's uncomfortable standing up here because there is a tension. This is clearly a, a conflict-ridden decision point, and I get that. But you have my commitment that if I can be helpful going forward at any point of time, this does not color my future conversations with anyone on the board or with the school department in general. I want to work with the schools, I want the schools to succeed. Everyone in Wyndham has a stake in making sure that our kids do well. So please, don't think that just because tonight is uncomfortable, it's a portent of bad things to come. It's not.
Thank you very much. Katina, certainly there are two separate issues here. One is whether or not we want to make a change in the health plan and delay for one year and in exchange for that, work with the town to accept some compensation to make us whole or better. And, or if we want to just stay the course and move to the state plan on July 1st. I will say that any point in time over the next year, the town could decide to move along into the state plan. But there's, they will not be able to do it by July 1st because they don't have the openers in their contracts with their bargaining units. So it's a much more complicated process for them and they didn't start ahead of time. I will also say that anything that the, that we want to, any adjustments that we want to make in our current budget to attempt to set aside any money toward the 2% set aside that is allowed, up to 2% set aside, which we certainly couldn't achieve between now and the end of the year, but to minimize our budget, isn't anything that we have to make a decision about tonight because we can wait if we want to until the Board of Finance has its public hearing next week and decides how to deal with our budget. And then we can move forward from there. So nobody is making the suggestion that the two are one motion tied together, Katina. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. Mark, did you want to say something?
Sure, yeah. First off, I want to thank Rob for coming tonight. I, I don't think any of us are looking at you as the evil empire there. You came in late to the process and further, I'm concerned, we're kind of sandbagged by, by some of your own staff, but I appreciate you're willing to come here and work with us. And I repeat my earlier thing is that we need a working, working session to, to, to do this. There is money to be had. In your presentation, Rob, you had mentioned that the 1.1 was to reduce our 5.8, but in your memo, the 1.1 was to compensate us for the extra cost of staying in the self-insured plan. So there's no type of confusion. Yeah, that's a kind of confusion. And the ultimate irony, of course, is that that's our money. That's the, the $800,000 comes from the Health Reserve Fund, which is the money that the Board of Ed employees put in there. So, so I think there's, there's, I would really hope to get some sort of working session. I don't know how many of the board members have to be involved in it. Because I agree with, with Katina, these are two separate issues, but I do think we need to address if we go back to the Board of Finance next Wednesday with a 5.8. It's, it's, it's fairly clear to me that's a slap in the face to the Board of Finance. They've told us it's not going to happen. We can be defiant and go back to them and say, that's what we want, give it to us. And they'll say, okay, you get 2%. So I think it behooves us to, to take a final look at that as if we can do anything. Because it, they can't dictate to us, we can't dictate to them, but I think it behooves the board to try and make a good faith effort to, to meet the Board of Finance. I mean, they've been in a legitimate complaint about, about tax increases. We can argue that, that none of that lays at our doorstep, but it's still there. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Anybody else want to make any comments? Neil, sir, anything you want to say?
Just a couple of things.
As the acting superintendent, this is really a difficult position, I know, for you to be in.
So I'll just make just a couple of points. One, I know the 2% aside got brought up, just so the public knows in the past, the past several years, we would have to get, the board would have to get permission from the Board of Finance, but the state statute actually recently changed. And now that's actually a Board of Ed decision, that's a recent change in law, just reminding everybody of that. Two, we have been working internally the best we can of scenarios if we weren't to get a 5.8 and things, again, that have, do not directly impact students. And the operational philosophy of my staff has always been not to lay off staff. We are trying to make sure everyone in our organization has a job. It's not good for humans and it's not good for the output of the organization. Then finally, I just want to remind, because lost in all this, we didn't talk about this from just a budget side, aside from the state partnership plan, is that, just reminding everyone, this is really important, we actually have a budget of close to $80 million. It's all our grants, it's everything. What we're asking the town to do is we're, the referendum is to fund about a third of that. And I don't think people have a, quite a concept about how much money it takes to run all the things that are legally required to make our district work and, quite frankly, successfully. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Neil. So how would the board like to proceed? Is there somebody who would like to put a motion on the floor? I would entertain a motion.
I mean, do we have to make a motion? Or, I mean, because we already voted for-
I think it would be good to reaffirm that decision if we, if we decided that's what you want to make a motion about.
Well, I just want to say, well, you know, it won't, might not have the same, it was unanimous previously. I don't know why we need to have another vote on something we've already, it, it sets a precedent here that we, we second guess ourselves.
Okay, so if nobody wants, what do you folks think about that? We just leave it as is?
No, I think we need to reconfirm the, the vote.
I don't know if that's parliament, according to parliamentary procedures. I think you need two-thirds of the board to say that they want to revisit that vote.
Well, we have two-thirds of the board present at this meeting. We do, technically. What you're saying, Mary, is we need two-thirds of the members to agree that we vote again to reaffirm, right? Is that what you're saying?
I believe that's what it is, but I don't see why we need to do this.
Well, you have somebody else on the board who says they would like to do that. What do folks think?
I think we already voted unanimously that we're moving to the state healthcare. And I think that Mark has a good point on seeing, having a conversation about other savings or money-wise, the other things, but that they are totally separate and we already made our mind.
So, Mark, are you comfortable or-
I'm still of the opinion that the board should make, make a reconfirmation of their vote tonight, that it's, it's the, the whole juxtaposition where we've been going for the last two weeks or last week. I don't see an issue with taking a vote tonight to reaffirm or to deny our previous vote. It may be parliamentary procedure that we need two-thirds, we don't know, we don't have that in front of us. I would, I just think we should take the vote tonight. What, yes or no, go or don't go? I think we owe it to the staff, we owe it to the Board of Finance, we owe it to the taxpayers. I think we just have to need to reconfirm that vote. I don't see a problem with, with that.
Okay, well-
I'm just one guy.
You're one person. I don't see other people saying that they feel that we need to do that, unless I'm reading the room wrong.
So what, what exactly-
You wanted to say-
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ilda, I can't see you, so it's-
I know, because I have my screen off.
Well, you're just like a disembodied voice. It would be really nice if you, thank you, Ilda, okay.
Can you hear me now?
What are you going to say? And then I'll call on Paula.
Okay, thank you, Paula. So my question is, what are we voting on?
We're not, it's, right now, the conversation is, do we need to take another vote to reaffirm that we are going in with the state plan? Mark is the only person who has voiced that he thinks we should do that. Everybody else says they think the previous vote should stand. That's what we're talking about right now.
Yes, I think the previous vote should stand.
Okay, Paula?
Thank you. I, I guess I'm, I'm still a little bit confused that if we were to have another vote and we were to deny or negate our last vote, I don't understand what position it puts us in that's any better than where we are right now. If they cover the cost of what we would have to pay more in addition to staying on the self-insured, that's great, but that cost saving is already in our budget, our 5.8. That is already part of our budget. So what are they going to do to help us get down to the 2.5 or the 1.1? I, I just don't understand what benefit this is to us.
The, just to try to be fair, okay, the, the town has made an offer that if we delay a year, they will give us more money than just the money to cover the increased cost. That's all. I'm not trying to reopen the discussion about this. I thought we had finished, but, I mean, this, that's all, Paula. They're, they're making an offer that would give us more than the money to cover the, the increase, the, the savings. But we're saying, what I'm hearing the room say is, they don't want to go that way and they just want to stick with the vote that we took unanimously on March 12th. Mark?
Well, like the dog with the bone, I don't want to give it, give it up quite yet. If it makes it easier for people, then I think we need to look at the fact that during these past two weeks, the town sent us a proposal of what would happen if we stayed with the state plan. So perhaps the vote should be whether we accept or reject that proposal, which doesn't affect the original vote on moving to the state. It really clarifies that we're not in agreement with the town's plan to, to go to the self-insured.
Mary?
I don't consider this a proposal. It was emailed to, I don't know, a select number of people. It was never vetted publicly. It was initially discussed in a meeting that should not have happened because it was outside of the public purview, although it did have members of the town council, the Board of Finance, the Board of Ed, and staff members and the town manager. So I find it, you know, we are starting to get into waters here. We're being asked to rescind votes that we have taken unanimously. We are being asked to discuss a plan that was conceived in a private meeting outside of the public purview and that no one else has seen. I would just, I want to say, we need to stop right now and go back to our legitimate Board of Ed meeting and not be pressured in this manner.
Thank you. Mark, I really think you're, you don't have enough votes to take that vote that you're proposing this evening. What I'm hearing from the board is that they would like to stick with the original action that they voted unanimously to take on March 12th, which is to proceed with the state health plan for the Board of Ed employees. We could have a separate discussion on whether or not we want to instruct the finance office and the superintendent to continue to work on savings and whether or not we want to bring that up at the Board of Finance hearing next week, or whether we want to wait and see what the Board of Finance does next week and then deal with it after that. So I don't know what the pleasure of the board is. Nobody wants to-
Do we have to have a, a vote to instruct the staff to continue looking at the budget? I think that they do that automatically, right?
The question is, Katina, whether or not we want to publicly say anything about where we are on that to the Board of Finance next week, or whether we want to wait and see what the Board of Finance does and then work on it.
Okay, so I think, thank you for clarifying.
I mean, does that make, do people understand what I'm saying? It's, if we do nothing, we're going to the Board of Finance, having a public hearing next week. People from staff and parents and public should certainly show up at that hearing on April 29th and share their opinion on the budget with the Board of Finance, which will listen to what everybody says at that public hearing and then make a decision after word about what they're going to propose goes to the voters for a vote in the referendum on May 20th. So if we do nothing-
And that's what usually happens, so, good.
Mary?
Yeah, I, I mean, we should, you know, the meeting is the meeting next week. I do want to point out that I, and this has happened in the past, it is well and good for people to say they hear talk in the street and people come up to them and say things, these comments need to be in public and it is not fair to take someone saying, I've had 10 people come up to me and say they don't like the Board of Ed budget. Well, they, they need to make that in public and it's, it's not valid to come before us and say, this is what the crowd is saying. I will listen to what I hear in public, that is the proper place for those things to be made. Otherwise, you're just hearing from people who wanted to, you know, there's, I haven't talked to you because clearly I wouldn't be saying that, so thank you.
Yep, I'm, I'm willing to give up my bone, since it's clear I don't have support for that. But I do want to point out, if we go, if we make no adjustments to our requests, if that's the road we wish to take, then the Board of Finance will arbitrarily tell us what our cut's going to be. So if we don't try and make some adjustments to the cuts, we're going to be stuck with whatever cut they have. And whatever happens, a no vote means it's too high. It never means it's too low. So I think we, we may want to consider that 5.8. Mary, I just, you're defending the ramparts, Mary, but if the Indians are coming, we have to be honest with ourselves and, and with the, with what we think we can get and what we think we can do for the students. I think leaving it at 5.8, then we're, we're guaranteeing it's going to get cut. There's no doubt about it. It'll be cut at their whim, at their, at their discretion if we don't offer anything. We're not negotiating.
Would you like to make a proposal, Mark?
No, I, I, at this point, I don't have enough information. I think we need to hear from, from Neil and from Rita and more about what the, what, if any, I mean, there may be no, maybe we're, maybe 5.8 is the bottom line. Maybe there is some, some wiggle room. We just have to, I just have to say that if we don't suggest one, they'll suggest it. So, no, I don't have a suggestion tonight. I think, you know, the next week, we, administration works and we maybe have another Zoom meeting or another quick meeting with the board and decide if we're going to go, go ahead with that, that 5.8 or, or change our minds. They will, but no, I'm not ready to make a decision tonight.
Is there anybody else who wants to say anything?
I agree with Mark.
Thank you, Ilda.
And, and I'm glad he dropped the bone.
Thank you.
I'm not picking it up though, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so if we're going to just leave things where they are, then the Board of Finance will listen to what people say next week. I would strongly suggest that we, that we request the same amount of money from the undesignated fund balance that was afforded to the town council to get their budget closer to zero, out of fairness. So I, I would like a support from the board on that request. I, I would love a motion on that.
I would motion that we, we add that requesting the seven and a half, seven point, seven I would motion that we add that requesting the seven and a half, 7.75, 750,000 from the reserve balance to help us with our budget as the town, and I guess now I hear the Wyndham Taxing District has also used.
Second.
Okay, motions made to request the same consideration that was afforded the town and the taxing district with money from the undesignated fund balance to help improve the bottom line of our budget as it goes to the voters. Any further discussion? Mary?
Yeah, just a point that our budget is much bigger, but I just want to make that point. So they're getting a larger percentage when they get that 750,000.
Agreed. Neil?
So 750,000, just for everybody, represents about 1.5% of our budget ask.
Okay, so if it's 5.8 and 750 was thrown toward the Board of Ed from the undesignated fund balance, that gets us down to 3.3 or 3.4?
That would be 4.3.
4.3, sorry, 4.3. Okay. All those in favor of asking for that, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Could I just ask a quick question, just for our staff? Knowing that we talked about working on savings, how would you like staff to communicate that to the board? I know that in scenario three, that I shared with everyone, like in the timeline, just if we do any sort of special meeting, it would have to be Monday, which means we'd post tomorrow.
Well, would the board like to have a special Zoom meeting on Monday night to hear from the Superintendent and staff about any potential savings in our budget proposal?
Yes.
Yes. Anybody object to that? Okay, so we will go ahead and schedule a meeting for Monday night.
I'll be working on that tomorrow. Thank you.
Katina?
I have a very big commitment Monday night. If the meeting can be earlier, like at a 4:00?
I don't think, you know...
Yeah, okay, I'll try. I'll try my best.
I think people who work, regular day jobs, have a problem with that.
Okay.
So we may just miss you.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
We have Personnel Monday, but it's a small agenda and we can wait till May to...
Well, what time is your Personnel Committee meeting? 7? Well, could we do...
We're at 6.
6. So could we do 6:30? Do you think it's more than a half hour?
No.
Okay, well, why don't we shoot for 6:30 then? Okay, because we do have to post it tomorrow. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so now we're on to Acting Superintendent's Report. Anybody who came to hear about the budget discussion, feel welcome to leave if you want to. We'll see you on Tuesday night.
There might be something you need to hear.
Acting Superintendent's Report. Neil?
So I only have one item in my report, but since it is Administrator Professionals Day, I'm going to give great respect to Lauren, who I now just assigned putting up a special meeting tomorrow. So thank you very much for all that you do. Oh, yeah, she's a class. So, thank you. She's smiling, but like, thanks, Neil. She's thinking, she's laughing because she knows. Okay, so the only item on my report is, we mentioned this. We, I believe Mr. Harris did the one in February. This is just an attendance and discipline report update. We did one, I believe, in the first week of February, and so this is just an April update. So in terms of attendance, our daily attendance rates are actually the same as they were about a year ago. However, and most of the schools are actually showing an increase noticeably. The daily attendance rate at the middle school and the high school has shown an increase from the previous year. However, incidentally, that's just not resulting in a decrease in our chronic absenteeism currently, where the district is a couple points higher. Of note, and I'm hoping this will change over the next few weeks, our, the winter impact of chronic absenteeism was a little more dramatic. There's usually an increase in the winter, but it is decreasing a little more rapidly than it did last year. So I'm hoping the result is that our chronic absenteeism is less. But I will note that noticeably, though, Wyndham Middle School and Natchog, in spite of everything, still have lower chronic absenteeism rates. And then just moving on to our discipline data, we are currently trending in terms of our in-school suspensions and our out-of-school suspensions to have fewer of those incidents than we did a year ago. And then that also is the same for unique students that are getting the in-school and out-of-school suspensions. And then our current expulsions currently is lower than it has been in the previous years. And that's, I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments in the report, but that's actually the only item on my report tonight.
Mark?
Neil, I don't know if you can answer this right away, but are any of these absentee rates can be credited to the Family Resource Centers at the schools? Are they helping reduce the chronic absentee rate?
So I will say, Family Resource Centers help, but our, we have, our attendance teams include stakeholders of all groups, including our family liaisons and other staff members. And they play a big role in making sure to be proactive and reactive when students aren't coming to school, but also looking at students that might be at risk of being chronic. So there's weekly attendance meetings at all the schools. That includes some connection with the Family Resource Centers, but the family liaisons themselves are usually part of an attendance team at the school they represent.
Are we getting close to referrals to the state for chronic absenteeism for truancy? Are we staying away from that level or are we...
So we do, we still run on the district level truancy reports, but the accountability index really focuses now on attendance rates to a lesser degree, but the real metric is chronic absenteeism rate. So in our meetings, we specifically sort of focus on those two specific aspects. Like they measure them, but they're really like sort of concurrent. We share all that information with the state, but they really ask us, "How are we doing on our chronic absenteeism rates?"
Katina?
Yes, just saying, I really appreciate that you are still including the unique, you know, individuals versus the number of incidents, because that gives a much better picture of how many students in the entire population of the school are, you know, making mistakes. Yes, which is a low, a low percentage, right?
Right, the unique students is relatively low considering the population of each school. That is correct.
Yes, thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? Thank you, Neil, for sharing that. Now we're on to, there are no committee reports. And we did discussion. So now we're on to action items, and I would entertain a motion to approve senior class field trip, a senior class field trip to Six Flags New England.
Ilda, so move.
Motion made by Ilda.
Second.
Second by Alicia. Any further comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, it's unanimous. And then we have approval of policies due to legislative updates. We reviewed all these at our April 7th meeting and Policy Committee meeting. And would we like to take them in chunks or would we like one motion to do them all together? Katina?
I would move one motion to get all of the 4,000 serious family and medical leave, 4,000 serious policy regarding employees on Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act, and 4,000 serious employment and student-teacher checks as a one motion for approval, as these are state updates that we must include in our policies.
Would somebody like to second Katina's motion?
Second.
Seconded by Paula. Any discussion? Mary?
I want to thank you for these nice explanations, because I don't think I could make the last meeting, so. And I do understand that it's due to, you know, additional language in the state statute, so it's very helpful.
Thanks to the staff, yes.
Thank you to the staff. I know Beth and Lauren do a lot of work on all of this for us, so.
Yep.
Thank you, and thank you, Lauren.
Okay, so the motion's on the floor. It's been seconded. All those in favor of approving the policies, approval of the policies due to legislative updates, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. And now we're on to public comment. But before we entertain any public comment, I want to remind folks, the budget hearing is next Tuesday, the 29th, at 7:00 PM at Town Hall Bellingham Auditorium. If you want to come speak and support, or I suppose you could speak against, but hopefully you'll speak for the school budget, that would be very, very helpful. So I encourage people to show up that night and support our budget. And the budget referendum, again, will be on Tuesday, May 20th. Any public comment? Oh, no, good catch. Okay, so before, before I call on you, just hold on one sec, just stay right there. Lauren brought up, you know, you can speak up when, when, when the chair makes mistakes, so please. We agreed to combine those policies into one motion. Now I need a motion to approve those policies.
Motion?
Motion made by Katina, seconded by Paula. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hands. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, Lauren. Never hesitate to bring that kind of thing up. Okay, now we're on to public comment. Make sure you identify yourself for the audience.
I can't hear her. Sorry.
Hi, Ilda, it's Kathy Colton, just thanking the board for sticking by their decision and recognizing that that decision is also what is fiscally best for the Board of Education budget. And what's become really clear to me as a resident of this town, you know, for over two decades, the Board of Education budget has been the boogeyman of the budget season for as long as I've lived here. And I'm really tired of that narrative. And what has been laid bare over the past few weeks is a sleight of hand and the kind of typical machinations that allow the town to come in at zero and the Board of Ed budget to continue creeping up. And I realize much of that is state law, but the other reality is, with a $3.7 million reserve and the size of our unit and the number of members we have paying health insurance, that is essentially our money, and if it's going to be spent, it should be spent to benefit our students. So I applaud you for asking for 750. I would triple that number, frankly, because it's ours. And I think, I hope that we will certainly be present and vocal in our support of this budget because we know what our students need, we know what they deserve, and I think when we are transparent with people, they show up for us. And what happened last year with the tax rate, I was horrified when I got my tax bill, went up 20%. I wasn't horrified that it went up. I was horrified that the narrative around it was the celebrating of the reduction in the mill rate. We need more transparency in this town, and I hope we can start working on getting it. So thank you for what you did tonight.
Thank you. It's very nice to see you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment? Kami?
Good evening again. It's Kami Nellen-Poyer. I am the President of the Wyndham Federation of Teachers. And I would just like to echo what Kathy said. I would like to thank the board for sticking to their original decision in favor of moving to the state partnership plan. So I look forward to meeting with you and council and moving ahead with our members and voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Oh, Rose. Nice to have you here.
Rose Reyes, 104 Summit Street. Oh, no, that's what I do at Town Hall. I want you to know that you have an ally on Town Council. This has been a longstanding argument that I've been having with them about respecting the needs to invest in our Board of Education and the people in our community. So I'm very, very pleased and thank you for speaking up and making sure that we're on the straight and narrow about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment? Seeing or hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:27. Meeting adjourned.